I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that's recording tonight's meeting? Hearing none. Please rise and join us in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to deliberate upon matters which if done in an open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation. And I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right. And then, all those in favor? I need a roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. So, we are going to reconvene the open session at 7:00 PM. Excuse me, we're gonna call the meeting to order now, 7 o'clock? So, where's my, you don't have to do it all again, right?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. So, the first order of business, A and R?
Yes.
Liam Durkin, 47 Water Street?
I don't think he was coming.
No? Okay.
Look. He is. A and R, simply is just buying his land basically in half, making two buildable lots.
Two buildable lots? They meet the requirements?
Yep. The assessment today, number 49.
And that's Waterman Road?
Yes.
Okay.
The Water Street. Water Street.
No, Waterman.
Waterman.
Yeah, but it's called the Waterman.
Oh, it's called Water Street?
Oh, God.
It's Waterman Road. Yeah. Yep. Okay. And so, you have no concerns? It's just a simple split into two lots? Nick, any questions?
None at this time.
Steve?
No.
Ronnie?
Nope.
John? Okay. To adjourn a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Yep. At least.
Okay. Come on, seconds up.
I was there. But I have to sit in the back.
Find out everything.
Right.
To Marvin Pines. To Marvin Pines.
There was a ton of them.
Real bank.
I got two spots. I understand they knew we had a few minutes.
I don't know why they.
That's on camera, so.
Real bank.
Leave it with the wages, Sam.
I didn't even say it.
I knew it was gonna be.
I didn't even say it.
I was moving.
I've been here this connection, but you missed it. You missed the connection.
I knew I was gonna say it, luckily I'm looking out.
Yep. Yep. I had one of those. Yep. Should've used it.
Well, you can tell.
Yeah.
Take away that.
What are you gonna, what are you just telling him to use?
Belt.
The tight belt around your waist?
Yes.
And we're just still trying to try it out.
Yeah. I'm gonna try that. Yep. Pull it tight.
Okay, 705 Impact Fitness, Andrew Lawton requesting a modification to an existing site plan under Section 9.4.1 of the zoning bylaws for the expansion of the parking area of a property located at 314 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 42, Castle Lounge. Is that you, Impact Fitness?
Yes.
Please come on up and have a seat. State your names.
Good evening. Fido Floto, foundation engineering. Andrew Lawton. Yeah, look at him. All right.
So, it's nice that you're so busy that you need more room.
It's always a.
That's a good thing. Yes. So, tell us about.
Okay. So, you all know the need for additional parking out there. And so, we've looked at all kinds of options for going for additional parking. You know, they've looked at valet, you know, they've looked at stackers, everything, you know, all kinds of different options, even using, you know, the compact spaces throughout. We really don't gain much with that. So, the only real option we've come up with now is to just expand what we have on site. And there were two areas that weren't built out during the original plans, and that was across the front, right in here, and then up in this rear corner. And basically, we didn't build those out in the beginning because we needed, because that one up in the corner was up near the wetlands, within 25 foot, and then up in the front was within 10 feet of the property line. So, now, you know, we've kind of exhausted all our other options, so we've expanded this proposal into those two areas to gain, follow another 29 spaces on the site. So, we do have to get some relief from Conservation and from ZVA, and also from the board.
Okay. So, you haven't met with either of those?
We've met with both of them already. Conservation, they're considering it, you know, they weren't opposed to it. They wanna do kind of a site walk to see the condition over in that area right now. Right now, it's all kind of covered with crushstone, Elijah Crushstone, so they just kind of wanna see what the area looks like, and I think we have a meeting with them tomorrow, actually, as a continued hearing. We met with ZVA this last week, and at the initial hearing, they weren't fully in favor of this parking up in the front, so we continued the hearing, and we're kind of trying to come up with maybe compromise or some solution to get that parking up in the front. But so that, neither of those have closed, and the ZVA one is more still open.
Wendy?
Yes?
Go ahead.
Can you show us the exact 29 spaces in addition to what you already have?
Yep, so there's 15 right across the front here, and then the other ones would be right in here. This, it's hard to see, this kind of a traced outline right there of the existing. So, the other ones are right in there.
And that's within the wetland?
Yeah.
Wetland buffer?
Yeah, the 25 foot. Before, we kind of held right up to that 25 foot, and then now have to expand it.
So, did ZVA give you any idea with the parking in the front? What's the?
Their main, they didn't like it necessarily in the front itself. They were concerned with, it was, I lost my notes for that meeting, actually, but it was mainly being so close to Route 20. It was landscaping, those type of concerns, snow removal in that area. One of them, I know Liv must live right, he said he drives by it every day, kind of. So, initially, you know, they weren't in favor of that, so we had to ask for continuance on that.
And that's what it looks like currently?
Yep. Yeah, that's a good representation of.
Last year at this time.
Those?
Last year at this time.
Yeah. Actually, no. Actually, yep, that is what it looks like right now, I was gonna say.
It's the same.
Yep. So, those larger trees in the front, those are within the right-of-way itself, so those wouldn't be. Those will still.
They'll stay.
Those will stay?
They should. Yeah, it's like, like, I said that when they brought up the original proposals, once they talked, they'd get rid of them. Once you go out of that parking lot on the right-hand side, it's hard to see past those trees coming around Route 20.
To the chair, I'm assuming this would fix the parking problem that you have, 29 spots? That's enough?
It's a good amount, yeah. I mean, they want as many as possible, but yeah, 29 would be.
Without paying more land.
Right.
Well, I just remember how many parking spots are in the stackers.
Is there any more land available around?
You know, we tried to purchase more land already. We haven't heard back from the land that's behind us.
Yeah, I think that you guys have done that initially too, right?
Yeah, we tried, we had an easement originally, it was granted, and then there was some confusion on their side, and then we sent them an offer for it, because it's for sale, we sent an offer, and we just never heard back. So, that's what we looked at, buying land, leasing the property across the street, which obviously, they weren't a fan of, because then you have to.
Run across Route 20.
Still not.
Which that's what some people are doing now.
Park garage is less.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, the building on Gilbury Street, but still, that's still a busy, busy intersection, even with the crosswalk, it's so close to the light.
Yeah.
So, you have a buffer in on those front diagonal spaces? They can't, they have to access by going out to the left?
Yeah, so the circulation would be around, so it's a one-way this way, because that's just, it's basically the natural.
But then they can back out into the travel lane?
Yeah, they back out.
Back out and go out that way?
Yep. So, they're all angled this way.
Is that a 24-foot travel lane?
With a one-way, it only has to be 14, because of the angle and the one-way. And that's why we kind of, and these are all small car parking, and that was the only way we could fit that in the front yard itself, too. And this, this circulation just kind of makes sense, because most people come in, look here, if you fall, they come around, look here if you fall, and then they keep making their way around.
Making their way around the building?
Yeah.
Did you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, sort of two quick things. I did watch the ZVA meeting this afternoon. I want to remember, suggest a parallel parking as a possible option to consider when you go to them again. Another item, I did send it off to you a couple hours ago, was you had comments from Town Engineer. I didn't, it should be, because I just see them, they're on 4:30. But I do have some suggestions, and one of them was, that's thought, that line of sight was okay.
Yep. Yeah, we'll consult with them. So, we got the review from Lina, too.
Yes. We haven't seen any of those documents yet. Yep. So, pretty typically, we'll have to wait to see what the other boards have to say. So, we'll continue the hearing.
Is there anything from this board that we should input?
Is there any public comment?
Hi, my name is Marty Reisner. I'm from Auburn Industrial Development Corp. We own the property at 100 Milbury Street, land behind. That's the one you were referencing, I think, earlier.
Yep.
So, I, my concerns about the project are that the, and this is Scott Goddard from Goddard Consulting, he's a wetland scientist, he's here representing AIDC, but my initial concern is that the wall that's for the expansion area really goes right up to the property line. So, it's a concern of mine how, you know, it's gonna be constructed without impacting our site, and then if, in the future, since it's right on top of one another, if there's snow or if there's debris, it's just gonna be a dumping station on our property. So, I'm concerned about that, how that's gonna be managed or maintained.
But that was part of the original approval of the original plan?
Right now, we have a, I think we've said, there's a, to get this expansion in here, we do have a retaining wall around the edge.
Retaining wall around the edge of that?
Yeah, right along this edge.
Because the expansion area is going right to the property line, whereas before it wasn't. So.
Yeah, so in the wall, the construction method.
Where's your existing wall now?
Right now, it's right.
In here, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Then you will go back to that white line?
Then we'll go back to here.
Where the property line is.
So, we're just a few feet off the property line. And typically, those walls are those, the big concrete block ones, so you build them from the inside. There's no real footings, you only dig down about a foot, for crushstone, and then they build from the inside. So, you really only need maybe six inches in front of the wall in order to build them, which is kind of nice for this situation.
Does it change the snow removal plan that you had?
Not really. I mean, obviously, through Conservation, they wouldn't want us to plow anything over that edge anyway.
Right.
There'd be a guardrail over the top, too, so that kind of limits how much you can actually push unless you load it over the top or really slam into it. You know, right now, I know there was a concern before with this being close, and I don't think that's been an issue so far. I think they've managed the site really well, where, you know, this, this area in here, which was already, there's one spot that's, I think, six inches from the property line. I don't think that's been really an issue to date. And nowadays, you know, when parking is a premium and land values, snow removal, it's more common that they do have to remove it from sites now.
I think we spoke of that when you came before.
Yeah.
They would have to do removal.
You know, people don't like to do it, but when parking's a premium, sometimes it's a costly business.
Yeah, you can't use on-site for the snow.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, but you're gonna defeat the purpose you're here for.
Right.
So, the snow removal was all part of the, you know, the original, and that doesn't change?
Even the one snow storage area, right up the top of the page, that was there to begin with?
Yeah, just this area, you know, just generally around the edges, you know, we made a good size one over here and then here, but.
That'll fill up fast.
Yeah, they do. You know, when you try to max the site, that's what you have to do.
Okay.
So, Scott Goddard, Goddard Consulting, a professional consultant representing AIDC in on this matter, so as a wetlands professional and representing the letters' interest here, you know, we are gonna be expressing some concerns with the Conservation Commission for working, in this case, right up to the wetland edge. We're, we're on the site plan here, you know, the wetlands is this green area, and we come up to here, so this is a discharge point with the riprap area and the fence, so it doesn't respect the 25-foot no disturb buffer zones with the discharge and with the retaining wall. And then, like what Marty said, with the, with the construction of the retaining wall right on the property edge, going from like two feet to eight feet at the maximum, they do have concerns over the long-term sort of management of the site where, you know, debris and the coffee cups and whatever comes off that parking lot, there's no on-site buffer that is allowing the property owners at 100 Milbury to kind of care for the site on-site, if it pushes everything off-site. So, if there was some kind of a vegetated buffer around that perimeter to allow for, you know, whether it's snow or other trash products or whatever, to kind of, to kind of keep that site just a little bit off the property line, so then I think AIDC would feel as though it was better protecting its property in that area.
What's the? What is the width of that drive? After, say this was built out, what is the width of that drive area around?
Up in, sorry.
For lack of a better term. It'd turn in here, so once this is built out, what do you have for width?
These are 24-foot aisles.
24-foot aisles?
Yeah, 24.
What's the requirement on that?
Yeah.
24.
24, okay. The only option would be, you know, on those ones on the backside, we could go to small car spaces on those and save a few feet.
And it's nine spots right along that back wall?
Yeah, right along here, you know, which I think you allow up to 25 percent of the site to be small car, so, you know, we could, in theory, shrink those up and save a few feet on the parking over in there, you know, to give down those.
I think if, you know, if a push came to shove, that's probably, probably wouldn't be a bad strategy.
Can you show us on there where you wanted the plantings?
Well, I mean, this is the property land that's shared with the AIDC property here, right? So, to the extent that we can create any degree of a buffer, you know, in and around there would be, would be helpful. So, we're basically gonna be looking at the face of a wall on this side of the property, you know, if this plan goes through. And I think the zoning board is, is it right, do I understand right, that there, there's a part of that ZVA request is, is to put these lot, these parking spots within 10 feet of the property line? Yeah. So, if the 10-foot buffer here to the property line was respected with respect to what the, before the ZVA on, that would give enough of an area to have a natural buffer between the two properties.
And what is on that property that they are but right now? Is there anything there?
It's vacant.
It's vacant?
Yeah. Right now, it's wooded, and this is a wetland right in here, so this area will never be developed anyway, but the uplands are kind of up to the top of the page.
Okay. Anything else? Steve?
Not at this time.
Nick?
Not at this time.
Mr. Brooks?
Of course. Could you save space toward the property line if you made those added parking spaces at the top of the page, diagonal parking spaces like you did on the bottom of the page?
Yeah, if, you have to look at the circulation to make sure we could do a one-way around.
Well, you put them at an angle, you're gonna have a wider, you'll have a wider, the 24.
Because, yeah, if you do an angle, say this angle, you wanna be able to come around that way. So, you'd have to just, you know, once people get used to it, the first time, I'm sure people are gonna go the wrong way, but once you get used to it, if you come to the gym often, you'll get used to that circulation. So, we could look at that. Sometimes the only drawback with an angled is sometimes you do lose some space because they're wider. Here, we did it because it does save on width, but each space is 12 feet wide rather than nine, so you kind of, as you go down the line, you end up losing a little.
Losing, yeah.
But we can look at that option to see if, if it's, whether, if it only loses, say, a space or something like that, if it can actually shrink that down enough to make sense.
The other thing I might say is, as far as their concern about debris, coffee cups, put a four-foot black vinyl chain link fence on top of your retaining wall.
Yeah.
It'll catch everything.
And that's, that's what, there's a fence from right now, I think, here to right here, right now.
Instead of a guardrail?
Instead of a guardrail, yeah, there was a fence right there, and I think that was the same intent at the time, was to prevent, you know, plowing, because they put in the fence, and they don't want to damage it, and it would look, have some leaks if things knocked over, and it was to contain anything that might be wind-blown or anything like that. So, that's also an option, just to continue that down the line.
All right. So, continue.
Yeah, this is on the public.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Okay. So.
Next meeting's November 12th.
Right, but when is the ZVA?
I got it out there. I just.
The 13th, then?
Yeah.
17th?
I think it's after.
Of November? So, we'll probably.
Yeah, but actually, after the ZVA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The week of Thanksgiving, is there a meeting that week?
Currently, don't have one scheduled that week.
So, it won't be until the 2nd Tuesday of December?
21st.
I'm sorry, when is it? 21st?
21st, is that 3rd, is that 3rd Thursday?
So, it'll be December 10th, be the 2nd Tuesday?
December 10th?
Yep.
Okay. So, entertain a motion to continue to December 10th?
Make a motion to continue till December 10th. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Mass Ten Enterprises LLC requesting a site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.2 and 3.2.5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for reference use and special permit under Section 3.9.2.2 for drive-through service use. Starbucks on property located 824 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map 66, Castle 148.
They're requesting a continuance from them.
Do we need to open it?
Yes.
Yeah. Have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you know when you'd like to continue?
They didn't specify a date or schedule for what?
The December?
November 12th.
Oh, November 12th. Okay, motion to continue that meeting to November 12th?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we have the Chester P Tunnel Post requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.3.8 of the zoning bylaws for a private lodge or club on property located at 88 Bancroft Street, Auburn, Mass., map 34, Castle 11.
Hey, John, Zach Couture, HST Group, representing applicant. Just before I get going, do you folks rather the easel setup or the table?
Easel would be good.
Yeah, all right, good.
Thank you.
Wherever you prefer.
So, this one is Chester P Tunnel?
Bancroft Street.
Yes. Okay. I don't think I had anything, not good. All my. Tunnel post. That was a couple days ago.
All right, so as you guys know, this is the Chester P Tunnel Post. So, what the project entails is the removing of the existing posts, which has since been removed. This is the old foundation location based on the existing conditions. And what we're proposing is a new building, which is 120 by 64 with 112 parking spaces. The kind of the goal of this site was to kind of limit the amount of disturbance in the existing parking lot. A lot of the parking is, the existing surface is in pretty good shape, so our goal was to kind of maintain most of that as much as possible. The biggest area of change is going to be in the front of the building. And I'll show, break the sheet here, and that is mainly just to accommodate handicap parking area, because the way it currently sits now, it's not very, it's not really compliant. So, what we'll do is we'll flatten out the front of the building here, provide a handicap parking area, and then what that will do is require us to have a two-foot wall.
Wendy?
Yeah?
Can you just show Bancroft, Bancroft Street?
Yeah, Bancroft Street here, and here's the term, with no access.
So, the front of the building is facing Bancroft Street, and it's that area? Okay. You're gonna turn that into handicap accessible parking?
Yes, exactly. So, it'd be the parking right along Bancroft that you see there. And the front, we will need to provide a little bit of retaining wall that will just help flatten it out for us. It's two feet in height, so it's not, it's not a very big, that wall. So, again, most of the, 90% of the disturbance is going to be from basically the back of the building up. Everything behind here will be basically left alone. Yes, so like I was saying, so this area is going to be flattened, we are gonna rework the curb cut a little bit. Right now, it's fairly large curb cut, we're gonna shrink that down to be about, it's going to be about 36 feet now, and I think currently, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it is quite large. It's about 85 feet the way it sits now, so we're gonna shrink that up, provide an in-and-out with an island between, just to kind of shrink it up, provide better circulation there. The parking spaces themselves, we're going with slightly larger spaces, we're going by 10 by 20. That's just to accommodate some of the elderly folks and older folks that tend to inhabit these places, it gives them a little bit more room to park, as well as, you know, people with bigger cars and that, and that kind of thing as well. The only spots that'll be different.
All right, so as you guys know, this is the Chester P. Tunnel Post.
So what the project entails is the removing of the existing post, which has since been removed. This is the old foundation location based on the existing additions. And what we're proposing is a new building, which is 120 by 64 with 112 parking spaces. The kind of the goal of this site was to kind of limit the amount of disturbance in the existing parking lot. A lot of the parking is, the existing surface is in pretty good shape, so our goal was to kind of maintain most of that as much as possible. The biggest area of change is going to be in the front of the building. And I'll show, break the sheet here. And that is mainly just to accommodate handicap parking area, because the way it currently sits now, it's not very, it's not really compliant. So what we'll do is we'll flatten out the front of the building here, provide a handicap parking area, and then what that will do is require us to have a two-foot wall.
Andy?
Yeah?
Can you just show Bancroft, Bancroft Street?
Yeah, Bancroft Street here, and here's the term with no access.
So the front of the building is facing Bancroft Street, and it's that area, okay, you're gonna turn that into handicap accessible parking?
Exactly, so it'd be the parking right along Bancroft that you see there. And the front, we will need to provide a little bit of retaining wall that will just help flatten it out for us. It's two feet in height, so it's not, it's not a very big, that wall it is. So again, most of the, 90% of the disturbance is going to be from basically the back of the building up. Everything behind here will be basically left alone. Yes, so like I was saying, so this area is going to be flattened, we are going to rework the curb cut a little bit. Right now, it's fairly large curb cut, we're gonna shrink that down to be about, it's going to be about 36 feet now, and I think currently, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it is quite large. It's about 85 feet the way it sits now, so we're gonna shrink that up, provide an in-and-out with an island between, just to kind of shrink it up, provide better circulation there. The parking spaces themselves, we're going with slightly larger spaces, we're going by 10 by 20, that's just to accommodate some of the elderly folks and older folks that tend to inhabit these places, it gives them a little bit more room to park, as well as, you know, people with bigger cars and that, and that kind of thing as well. The only spots that'll be different will be along this back row here, those will follow Auburn's conventional sizes, and that's basically just to get us enough parking that we need. And obviously, the handicap spaces will be a little different too, those will meet the 88 regulations.
You're gonna do a little landscaping, dress it up a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so we, so in the front, we'll provide landscaping here and along, you know, our front entryways, just to kind of make it nice, look appealing as you come into the new, the new post. The existing utilities right now, when the foundation was moved, the sewer line's been stubbed, as well as the gas line, the water line has since been removed and it's now replaced, there's a new water line in there, it's now a two-inch service, and then a six-inch service, a six-inch being the fire protection, so that's already been installed. The point behind that is there, the town plans on paving Bancroft soon, so the idea was to get the utility stuff done as soon as possible, so we're not cutting into a new, freshly paved road.
Which would not be allowed.
Right, exactly, so, yeah, so that was, so that, that was the goal of that, to get that done immediately, so that has since been put in place.
Okay.
And that's, it's basically the gist of it, you know, I can open it up to questions, concerns, or anything you folks would like to discuss regarding the project.
So I'm seeing, you know, ramps and decks, so that you're gonna have more of an accessible access, accessible access, handicap accessible?
Yes.
Into the building?
Yep.
On both ends?
Right, right.
And that deck is just simply as a landing space before you go in the door, correct?
I believe that's, that's ramping up to the front door.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
Go ahead.
The, in the front, where you got the handicapped?
Sure.
I'm just wondering why you didn't move the building back a little further, have them in the front of the building, right up against it, so it's closer to it for them, or instead of in the front, and then you could landscape that with a little island?
Yeah.
Is there...
So I...
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's the grade or what.
Yeah, and, and, well, a lot of it was, is basically we wanted to use the same general footprint where the old existing building was, we are expanding it a little bit this way, and basically to do that is, our concern was, is if we moved it forward or back, we would start to lose some of our parking areas. And unfortunately, with an assembly hall, the parking requirements are actually pretty large, so we're providing 112, and we're actually on the hook for 112, so our concern was if we started to kind of shift the buildings, we wouldn't get our aisle width that we needed, and, you know, parking would become an issue. Yeah, and that, that's, that's the concern, is parking.
Steve?
Yep, so one ramp for upstairs and one for downstairs, or there's gonna be two stories to this.
It's a full basement, but it's only gonna be used for storage at this point. On the right-hand side is gonna be the member's side, and the left-hand side will be for functions. So instead of it being up and down the way it used to be, it's gonna be side by side.
Nick?
No questions at this time.
John?
A couple. How far does a setback have to be, Adam, for the parking lot to end before you hit the road? Is there a certain setback, is it 10 feet?
10 feet.
So what do we have there, I'm not sure, in the front?
It should...
It varies.
It should be pretty much a straight line.
Yep, so to the front space, it's 10 feet.
Oh, you got a 10-foot wide strip?
Yeah, well, and, but that does include the retaining wall itself.
End of the parking space and then 10-foot plantings and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah, so the face of the wall at the back.
You have like six or seven feet of planting space, the retaining wall's included in it, it's 10 feet.
And that, and, and also for consideration too, that's to the property line, if you actually look at the configuration of the road, the town's landscaping island actually extends quite a bit off of that as well, so it's not like, you know, you're parking right on the road itself, it's, it's pretty far off the road. That's, that 10 feet is to just the property line, which is a small portion of that, that shape you see in front as it Bancroft starts to turn, that's mostly the towns right there.
Are there gonna be wheel stops in front of the retaining wall? Because somebody to pick up trucks is gonna run right into that, it's only two feet high.
I don't believe we planned on wheel stops at this time, but it's something, you know, we can definitely consider, you know, as you move along.
On page two, I don't understand how your drywells are gonna work, because the grading doesn't, doesn't follow the drywall, they assume the drywalls are there to catch all your runoff before it runs out to the back.
Well, the drywells themselves are actually only to accommodate the roof itself, so that's to pick up the corners of the roof and actually bury it in the ground, they're not designed to collect surface water.
And then when you have your proposed non-stake hay bales on paved surfaces?
Mm-hmm.
That's not gonna work, it's gonna run right underneath it. Why can't you just put it at the end of the pavement, right at the back, at the very end of the parking?
Yeah, we could do that, the idea was just to kind of limit the amount of hay bales and the amount of, you know, to reduce some of the cost, because as, as far as you run down, you know, it's more for material, it's more for labor, so the idea was to pull them up, but if it's an issue, then I don't see a problem in running them down.
Oh, on the, on the upper side, I don't know why you need hay bales, because on the upstream side, water's not gonna run uphill.
Well, you only need, we're only doing it on the sides and then on bottom, so they're not running around the front here, they're running along the sides and here.
At the top of your page, isn't that uphill from the building?
This is uphill, but the idea is, is that if you disturb here and you don't have hay bales here, it's gonna go off, off-site, and we want to contain any potential sediment runoff or anything like that on-site.
Yeah, I just don't think the hay bales are gonna work sitting on pavement.
So on the sides here, they're not on pavement, it's only this back row.
That's what I'm talking about, the back.
And you can pin them with like metal pins, but typically, you know, with hay bales, you'd have like a big wooden stake.
Yeah, wooden stake, and usually a silt fence behind it.
Yeah.
So I don't know how, I don't know how it's gonna work, it's gonna run right into the hay bale. If you have any heavy rains up there where you have the foundation open?
Right.
And open pavement areas, you're gonna be ripping up some pavement.
And like I said, if it's a concern, we can, we have no problem pulling it back.
It's a concern?
Sure, yeah, yeah, we can update that, that's no problem.
So the drainage is just gonna continue to drain down to the back?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're actually not, we're not increasing impervious on-site.
They got less, aren't you really moving?
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually shrinking it up a little bit, so we're not doing full conventional drainage like you would on a commercial site, as we're not increasing the impervious, because, you know, that would increase the overall cost and the overall disturbance to the project quite a bit. So the idea was to mitigate the roof runoff, you know, because we are gonna expand a little bit of the roof, but we're expanding over pavement, impervious, impervious, so we wanted to, you know, provide infiltration for the roof itself, but for the existing parking lot, we, we want to leave it at this and not cause more disturbance and more, more cost to the overall project to, because to come back in and, and do a whole drainage system for this would, you basically have to tear that parking lot out?
Oh, yeah.
Regrade it, put a whole new system in, and then, you know, repaint the whole thing, so, you know, you basically be starting from scratch.
Well, Adam, does he have to go through the consultation commission for this?
I don't believe you've gone to conservation.
Well, does he have to?
Can double-check all that, just to make sure.
Care review?
It, they go out to care review, it's with Graves right now, went out last week, so they should hopefully have come back next week or so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we haven't seen official comments yet from them.
Okay. Mr. Brooks?
How far is your back with, see where the pavement is in the back, how far is it to the edge of the pond or rough area of the pond?
It's, it's quite a ways off, I'm not exactly sure, because I don't have that area surveyed, but it's, it's quite a bit.
Over 100 feet?
Yeah, it wa, it was far enough that it wasn't a concern when we were out there surveying it.
Is that your job?
Okay, there's a couple more questions. Has the lot been perked for your drywalls to see if it will drain? Because there's a lot of ledge up in that area.
It hasn't at this time, no, no, and I'm, and I'm su...
It won't be required until...
Right, and I'm assuming that will be one of Graves' first comments, because that's typically one of their comments, so we'll, we'll address that as it, as it comes to us.
And on your drywall detail, I assume the frame and cover's gonna be at pavement level?
Yes, yeah.
You don't say what type or loading capability of that, or the structure is?
Yeah, so the, it'll be for H20 loading, the framing grate, and what we use is actually stackable drywells, so in case they need to add one to rise up.
So they can handle.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, they are designed for H20 loading, they're concrete structures.
It needs, it needs to say that, though.
Sure, yeah, I can update that, that's no problem.
And when you tie your pipe into your knockouts, how are you filling the void between the pipe and the remaining concrete from your knockout?
I'm not sure of the question, can you repeat that?
You knock out your, they have the knockouts in the structure?
Mm-hmm.
And you slide your pipe in?
Yeah.
What's filling the void between the pipe and the concrete structure?
So it's go...
What way sand and dirt's gonna run in there?
So you're saying the new connection into the building itself?
No, into the drywall.
Into the drywall itself? I'd have to, I'd have to double-check on that, I mean, these are, these are pre-cast, developed systems by Shake Concrete, so I'm not 100% sure how they, how it ties off, but I can look into it.
They're not gonna tell you anything, they're just gonna give you a knockout.
Yeah.
Either you ask them for a rubber boot, or you bend the type of pipe you're using.
Right.
It may, I don't know what the plumbing rules are, maybe cast iron, if these are roof drains, you wouldn't have to go in the building unless you're gonna have interior roof drains.
So, yeah, so the roof, the roof layers will run under, under the new parking lot, so it's gonna come out and into the ground.
But it's all gonna be exterior of the building, run into the ground and over to the drywall.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly.
So what I didn't want to see happen was when the guy, the contractor puts the pipe in the drywall and then just buries it.
Yeah, I mean, typically, I mean...
You order it up for something.
Right, exactly, I mean, typically, they would use either, like you said, like a rubber boot or it's mortared, I mean, I mean, they don't typically don't just jam it in and...
Oh, yeah, they do.
Hit the road.
Oh, yeah, they do, do it every day.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and that's not the intent here, so I can add a note to the detail itself to make it sure that it's, it's sealed up properly, that's no problem.
And then under your road, under your parking lot, across the, you have coverage of the compacted gravel burrow, that should be processed gravel, like gravel burrow.
Okay.
Sure, no problem.
Just a smaller minus, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Any comments, public comments? Okay, so we have to wait to get the fair review, so we'll continue the meeting. When do you anticipate, you said they have it currently?
I'm, the next week or so, we can have, we've got three weeks to the next meeting.
Move to the November 12th? Okay, make a motion to continue to the November 12th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we know the date of the evening starting?
Pardon?
Do we know the date of that paving starting?
What paving?
Paving.
So they had to do a bunch of work.
Bancroft Street.
Bancroft Street.
Oh, probably in the front.
Is it already paved, or do they do know when they're paving it?
They just did some by my house, this today.
No, that's not Bancroft Street.
Oil's old B in three weeks, and that was two weeks ago.
Okay. So we're all in, we're all set. Okay, good, all right. Anytime.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
He's probably still got a little more paving, right?
Yeah, he's got a couple streets in town there.
So is this SZLL Realty? SZLL Realty LLC definitive subdivision plan for 13 lots, simple family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Avenue, map 12, parcel 120.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Donald O'Neill, I'm at the Larn Whistler office at 68 Pleasant Street here on behalf of the applicant, and also with me, Joe Graham, the engineer and Bob O'Neill, the surveyor on the project. We did get comments back from Graves in terms of the plans that were submitted, and I think Mr. Graham is prepared to kind of review that with the board and see what additional questions that might, you may have for him.
Yeah, there's quite a lot of...
Yes, so we haven't...
Outstanding.
Yes, we haven't resubmitted back to Graves, we wanted to make sure that we had everything fully addressed in order to hopefully reduce the review time and, on that, and we mostly came here tonight to make sure that we have a list of additional information from our last meeting, but we wanted to see if there was any other additional comments besides Graves. I can go through some of their main points if you would like to, if you didn't have the chance to review it.
How do you think we should proceed with this, Alan?
Well, I hear what the thoughts are, I don't know, that's fine, I know the town engineers are, they're waiting for the next set, that's responsible, they really look too far into it.
Mm-hmm.
There are a couple in the audience, I believe, that are from the area, so they may want to hear what's going on.
Mm-hmm. Do they want to go over it one by one, until...
No.
Yes, I mean, there's a million of them.
And basically, it's Graves responding to what was sent to them after the first go-around, this is their response, and now they have to address these bald comments and resubmit that to Graves.
Correct.
Correct, yep. We're pretty much in agreement, I didn't see anything that was outstanding or something that we couldn't address, but we feel that we can address everything, I just wanted to be able to fully address it and not rush something in order to get it to the fair review.
I think, you know, and I'm, I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but until Graves, you know, these are acknowledged and, you know, worked with Graves on them, if you have updates that you'd like to, you know, provide, it seems to me that there's, you know, an awful lot of outstanding items.
I could read this all day long, but I can't apply it without sort of plans.
Right, yep, and, yeah, we realize that, and we just want to have this go another, another round, if we can take our time and adequately address all of those.
Yeah, I, I, I'm of the mind that Graves needs to, you know, you guys need to work it out with Graves, come back, we'll know that everything's acknowledged, that there's maybe one or two outstanding items that you need to address, but this is a lot. So is there any other updates or information that you wanted to?
Besides that, for the most part, no, we feel like we, we can address those stormwater issues, we feel that we can address the, they had some questions on roadway geometry, very minor things on that, that would just be tweaking some of the lot areas, and then once we're completed with that, we wanted to provide the table of each, each lot and each frontage, I think that was requested last time, on either another sheet or on the notes page.
The grading, or...
I think you're gonna do, you're gonna show how you're gonna enter, where they were gonna enter from, the lot size, and that they all had adequate frontage.
Correct, yep.
And do we want to require grading plans for each of the lots, considering...
Didn't we say, I thought we said that last time.
Yeah, considering the, some of the things we've come up against and with water runoff and affecting everybody else's property, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen here, so we want a grading plan for every one of the lots as well.
And it's all clay there, so there's no absorption on, not much into the soil.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll provide a comprehensive plan of the grading throughout the whole site to show that our limits of work, obviously, and that it doesn't impact any of the other properties.
Okay, and, hi, did you have something you wanted to?
I did have a couple questions.
Okay.
So I'm Trishal Bulbridge, I'm on 15 Gibson Road, directly below where the houses are going on Hampton, and I haven't seen the second round of questions, but I'd seen the first one, and I'd been interested in how they were going to get equipment to the plots that are directly above our house with that grading to do any building, as well as if there were environmental reports, because I had mentioned that I've been seeing more plants coming in there that I know are unprotected, so I was worried about that, as well as As well as the water runoff, since we have a huge issue with that already from Hampton. And we were highly concerned if any blasting needs to be done, if we've already sustained damage to our foundation from other projects in the area that have done blasting.
Okay. If you wanna-
Yeah, I guess I can do it in reverse order, in case I know something. Uh, so you're located-
Yep, right there. And there's also a structure that's on the map that is directly where your access route is, which we've had and maintained for, um, over 40 years.
Okay. Um, as far as, as blasting, we don't intend to do any blasting.
Okay.
Obviously, if, for whatever reason-
It's not just clay, the shale.
Yeah. For whatever reason, if, um, you know, that ends up happening or whatever, I think there's certain protocol that they would have to follow that would obviously protect your existing structure.
And it's important for you to protect by taking photos of, you know, the existing condition prior to the blasting and, you know, it's very important.
Yeah.
You do all of that.
The contractor's responsible to do a pre-blast survey. They also have to put seismic graphs outside the house within 20 feet. And if the, uh, velocity of the blast is over 1.5 feet per second or something, they have to stop and reevaluate what they're doing to minimize. So you should be covered insurance-wise, but like Wendy said, take your own pictures.
Oh, I, yeah, protect yourself. Yeah.
You retire a lot, not just the foundation.
And then you had a, uh, the site is obviously recently cleared, uh, last year at this point. Yeah, up to here, there's parts, and then some of the trees were cut down, right? Not completely cleared. On the side, uh, I don't believe that anything has been done. You said that there's, um, additional vegetation?
Yes.
Okay.
So-
Yeah, I didn't know. I didn't notice that. So I will-
I'm sorry, Robert O'Neil. Uh, we actually had Echo Tech, uh, they were hired to go out and delineate all, all the women areas, so they did walk the entire site. There is, there is a report, um, I believe, uh, that was part of, um, this middle job.
Did they do it up by Hampton as well? Cause I haven't seen anyone. I work from home and usually-
Yeah, so they walked the entire prop and-
Yeah, we'll review the report again to make sure that, right, if it doesn't specifically state anything, we can take a look.
Okay.
Sorry.
Has that report been forwarded to the Conservation Commission?
Believe it has. Uh, if not, we can provide it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't recall seeing it now.
Okay.
Is there gonna have to get their approval before we can do anything?
Right.
Is there anything else?
Um, I, I said, so the, uh, the structure that's not on there, that secondary, am I? So, um, this is an access road, right?
Uh, no, actually, uh, there's an access from Vesper Street to this here.
But for these houses, how are you getting to them?
These houses will be access from Hampton Street, and this will be a proposed sewer easement for these houses to connect to the gravel sewer, to go that way.
To go that way, so-
And these are the lot lines for the different houses. So this house would have this area.
Okay. So is this-
Would have smaller areas.
Okay. Oh, and what about, what's this?
That is just, so there's a, um-
Is that the other access road?
No, so these are just offsets. I know it's a-
Okay.
Um, to make sure that we're not building within so close to the property line, so we establish that throughout the site.
Okay.
So that's what this dash line is.
Okay, so that's, they wouldn't touch that there?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we're not proposing to do anything. Some grading, obviously, will happen, um, towards this area, but we're trying to, I don't wanna impact anything.
Okay. All right, cause this is where that I was, again, funding the plant life, which is around there, cause we do care for that land as well. Um, and also we have our own well water, too, which is, I don't believe, set for like lots of other wells to come off of it, so.
Yep.
And we prefer, as opposed to it. So I didn't want to-
Did you say you're feeding other houses from your well?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, but we've got about as much pressure on it as we can at the moment. So, but, um, yeah, so those are things that, uh, we were concerned about. Um, and then if they're gonna be doing, yeah, that's, it's a pretty steep grade, and we get stuff just from the road as it is, so I'm really worried about that.
Yep.
Yep.
This is a challenging site.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. Those are the questions that I had had.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, did you have a question?
No, I, I just wanted to say it's gonna be imperative from the board that you design the grading in between the house, not only in between the houses as they exist in your development, but also that you do a maximum protection for all the existing neighbors.
Okay.
Such as, uh-
Yeah, just real quick, Lynn Peterson.
Lynn Peterson?
Pearson, Pearson. I'm at 1782 Hampton, so right next to the one from last house there. On Hampton's or the first, depending which direction you're coming, but the three houses on Hampton Street. So my concerns are, and actually Trish is right behind me.
Yeah.
Yep. So my concerns are somewhat the same as hers, where I'm in such close proximity to that unit that is gonna be going there. And, um, my driveway actually, and my driveway's very steep as it is. I'm gonna be really curious to see how you're gonna access those houses from Hampton Street, depending on, depending on how big drops off there. It'll be very interesting. And my driveway is actually, you know, on the side is, is just big crushed stone there holding that back along that side. So I've got this, you know, kind of same concerns to make sure that there's not a lot of things that are gonna be disturbed there.
Well, again, it's important that you do your documentation, take photographs, and, you know-
I will.
Do your due diligence prior to-
Not just the house even around where the driveway is, and all that, too.
Prior to the, you know, beginning of construction.
Yep.
Anything?
No, not, not this time.
Okay, so Concom? Graves?
Yeah, we can, I'll send it to Graves. He probably wanna have it-
Hopefully, the next time we see this, everything's gonna be acknowledged and everything will be-
Yeah, we do hope so.
Yeah, yeah. That would be great. And do you have anything else that you wanted to add? No?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. So Conservation Commission, when, would they be going before Concom?
They have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so it won't be until sometime next month. I don't know exactly what the dates are, um, but if you wanna email and confirm it.
So we can continue, should we continue to the December meeting, then?
That might not be a bad idea. I don't know. It'll take the applicant to go through and, um, send back, um, very few plans.
To December, but if something came up, we could-
We can continue till November and if need to, continue to December.
Well, yeah. Let's, we'll continue, how about if we continue to the November meeting? Then if there's anything that is still outstanding, then we can just continue it to the December meeting.
All right.
Work?
Yes.
Great.
Time-wise, are we okay with everything?
Sorry.
Time-wise, are we okay with everything?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, motion to continue to the November 12th hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Hopefully, we'll see you on the call. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Strategic Behavioral Solutions requesting site plan approval for private educational use under section 3.2.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws at 390 Southford Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33, car seat 85.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just reviewing a letter that was received from, where did we get this from? Doesn't even say. Engineering, okay. This is from Bill Coyle.
That came in a couple hours ago. I sent it to the applicant. I don't know if they've seen it yet, but, um, quickly did a, quicker look, or rather, planned that I received the other day, um, this afternoon.
Okay, so what do you wanna do with this?
The plans I received, um, Friday are, I believe, are the most up-to-date plans.
Is that a fact statement? These are the most up-to-date plans?
Plans were submitted on Friday, Norman.
Yes.
So, um, but the, the first thing that I noticed was an outstamped. That's a concern, as well as, um, several other concerns. It was indicated the parking spots are, um, 18 by 9, not 18 and a half by 9. 18 and a half is a requirement. I believe the town engineer mentioned a comment about the light.
Yeah, the floodlight is not gonna be enough to illuminate the rear parking lot.
There was, what we call some lights, um, in the previous iteration of the plans. Light back here, they, it was removed, and, um, the floodlights were added over here.
So, we just received this today. Haven't really had the opportunity to review this. Have you seen this letter from, um, engineering?
When I walked in here tonight, here, we got it left at five today.
Adam, Chairman, so for the record, again, Todd Rodman, Norman Hill, Nico Agora, from the client. So, uh, Mr. Menard was good enough to forward it to us. I mean, we got it about 6 o'clock this evening. But if, if we can, I guess we'd like to just go through the seven points. We think we can do it fairly quickly and tell you what we're thinking, and then-
Okay.
Okay, so a number of these, um, Mr. Menard just mentioned, um, things like plans not stamped. So obviously, that's something we can do. It's more of an administrative matter.
Sure.
So item one is a stamp of the plan. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna skip down, and I'll come back. But item three, um, the engineer's comment was that the plan is based upon aerial imagery, but it's a parking plan that requires specific dimensional requirements. Mr. Hill's office did survey the parking lot back through the area where we're proposing parking. So, um, so there is, it is based on an actual survey of the parking area. That was item three. The, um, item number five is a comment that, uh, the engineer's asking for verification that the slope of the handicap parking space doesn't exceed 2%, and that's something we can provide.
Okay.
So that's within our control. The likewise, comment number seven says that the parking spaces need to be 18 and a half by 9, and they're currently specified as-
We have one page, Adam. Is there a second?
There was a, a second page.
I'll hit it right back to you.
Yeah, sure. It's the second page.
Okay. So-
That references with-
Again, that's, um, we, we noted in the bylaw that, you know, technically, um, with, uh, with parking areas of over 40 spaces, we're entitled to have a certain number of smaller stalls for small cars. But rather than doing that, I think it's easier for us just to stripe them in accordance with your standard, 18 and a half by 9.
Okay.
So I'm suggesting that we can take care of one, three, five, and seven as kind of administrative matters.
Okay.
At least that's what we're thinking, and so then maybe we can try and address the outstanding items, which are two, four, and six, which maybe are more substantive. And two is a note that, um, essentially talking about the traffic problems created by Dunkin' Donuts. And when Mr. Hill and I met with Mr. Coyle and Mr. Menard, we talked about, and Mr. Coyle expressed, uh, his concern about that. We also talked about that really the problem was an early morning problem and an evening problem, and we've modified our hours. So I think we told you last time that the hours of operation would be, would be between 9:30 and 3:00, and that was done expressly to try and avoid that morning crunch. We can't control Dunkin' Donuts. Um, we're just a tenant. We don't own this property. To tie this specific addition of an educational use in a building that we've, that we already occupy, um, it's really just not workable for us to try and, um, have the owner or Dunkin' Donuts create a separate drive-through lane. So that's-
Wendy?
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
But you, currently, you have X amount, you, you're gonna increase what you do there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what I've done is to look at what's gonna happen as a result of that. And when Bill, you know, it's not your fault that Dunkin' Donuts has all this queuing in blocks up Powell Street, which it really shouldn't, uh, but, uh, cause it impedes other things, too. But it's what we gotta look at to not make it worse than what it already is.
Absolutely.
So, so, Chair, we, I spoke to Bill Coyle and, um, kept several other people, and it's a board's pledge to condition the hours of school from the 9:30 to 3:30. I think we'd all be okay with that. The Dunkin' Donuts queuing does die down, um, after our-
Yeah, it's, yeah, and that made it's not-
It does, but I have to say, I'm at Webster Five Savings Bank every day making deposits for work, and I sit at the drive-through, and I watch what happens. And it's not just at 9:00, you know, before 9:00 in the morning. It happens over the course of the day. And it seems that, you know, 2:30, 3 o'clock, uh, I need the iced coffee, jolt, um, you know, the line is there. And, and again, you did not create this problem. That's, that's absolutely true. But to say that there are, you know, of course, there are higher times than others, but it does happen frequently over the course of the day, so. So 9:30 to 3:30, you're okay with?
Yeah, I mean-
All right, DCG?
I think it's worth, first, speaking for myself, I think it's worth monitoring the situation to try to minimize, and this is a concern by not just me and Bill Coyle, but the police and fire chiefs, through all of them. It's a big concern for the safety of-
And it does seem like a bigger, yeah.
Your, your facility, it's just a, it's a concern.
It does seem like it's a matter that needs to be revisited with Dunkin' Donuts as well, so. But that's not what's in front of us right now. So then the large impervious areas that are gonna be reduced?
Right, and, um, maybe, uh, Norman, maybe you can just show, I can hold this up.
Yes, next to the dental office, next to the dental office, there are four spaces that are like 45 feet deep.
They exist now.
Right.
So-
Right, because aren't they double parking the employees' vehicles? Right, that's what you told us a lot about.
So, um, we've only counted them as four spaces. I mean, you could park eight cars there. We're only count, we actually count 12 cars there. If you come up with the aisle here, you can put 12 cars there, but we're only counted it as four spaces.
You mean, you mean you're talking about by putting three cars in each lane?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna do that.
How does he get that out?
We're not gonna do that. So Bill's saying you could eliminate all that pavement, which is an area of about 40 feet wide by 30 feet deep. You could eliminate 1,200 square feet of pavement.
Yeah.
And, and I could simply show these spaces to be striped out here, and that pavement to be eliminated. So that, that would, I mean, I'm not aware of a drainage problem here, but that would certainly reduce the amount of runoff coming off this site. A little bit.
But he's also saying shifted to a line with the travel aisle, eliminating the large unstriped area.
Right, so-
Reduction in impervious area would not, yeah, increase, but aligning the travel aisle.
Just put those same four stripes right here along the travel aisle.
Continuing this line and eliminating this.
And eliminating that. Yeah.
I don't know if the landlord's gonna let us rip up pavement. I don't know if he's gonna let us do that.
You're just renting the space.
We could show the spaces to be striped along the aisle. Like I said, you could park three cars deep there if you did that, but I don't know if they'll park there.
Now, Norman, isn't there, um, there is some impervious cover that's coming out?
We are proposing to remove this pavement back here to match the pavement. I'm sorry. We are, we are now proposing to remove all this pavement here to match the new pavement that's proposed here, to provide that 24-foot aisle to the rear parking lot. So we haven't, it, we're not proposing to increase the previous coverage of the lot, but, uh- So, we haven't, we're not proposing to increase the previous coverage of the lot, but we could approach the landlord and ask him if he'd let us rip up this pavement next to the dentist's office. I don't know if he's going to say yes or not. He's going to say no.
Who is it that owns the property?
Buckley.
See, Nick, who owns the property now?
Buckley.
So, what's the old Parker family?
Buckley. It just seems to me that there's an awful lot of hoops that are being, you know...
Jumped through.
Jumped through for someone who's renting a space and is updating the parking.
That Buckley is jumping through the hoops.
No, it's not Buckley. It's, these people jump through these hoops.
And they're saying they're not increasing the...
Impervious area.
Right.
And we're willing to stripe these spaces 18 and a half feet by nine feet.
Mm-hmm.
How many kids will you have in the school?
Should be around 25, not more than 28. But 28 kids should be by three years from now, two years.
How many right now?
Right now, we don't do anything, you know, that's, now we do home services.
When you, how long will it take you to get to...
Twenty years.
Two years?
Two years, yeah.
Yeah.
Two years, yeah.
Because I certainly think it's unlikely to make them jump through.
I agree.
Considering that they're renting a space and...
That condition and stuff, that's, should they have to condition, have to have the stamp plans, that's, that's obvious one. Other stuff.
And, you know, as Adams did, I think the number four is more of a suggestion than it is to better, you know, better align the travel aisle and...
Do you still do the travel aisle, it's just paint?
Yeah. I do agree with number five. You do need to make sure that those accessible spots are going to be...
Yes. Right, we'll certify that. And if I could jump to the final one, which was number six. You know, our hours are going to be 9:30 to 3:30, which is daylight.
All the time.
This is, right, we only operate five days a week, so I don't, again, it's adding something that, it's really...
Yeah, not your responsibility as a tenant for, you know, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we're going to look, like you said, I don't know what we can do with Dunkin' Donuts. We should look at their original site plan and some of that.
Yeah.
To see where it was.
I mean, I remember that one vividly, yeah. Anyway, that's for another, yeah. The 9:30 to 3:30 is going to, so you can get those plans stamped. The 9:30 to 3:30 satisfies, satisfies number two. Number three, you said, is an actual survey. It's not just aerial.
Right.
Number four is a suggestion. I don't believe that that's really, I mean, don't let me know if I'm out of line here. Number five, you'll definitely certify. Number six, like you said, you did 9:30 to 3:30.
Number seven will strike the spaces...
Number seven will be 18 and a half, yeah, by nine.
Am I, is it, am I pushing my luck too far? Is it inappropriate for me to ask whether you'd consider approving this tonight with those conditions, conditional on us submitting the revised plans that meet those specific conditions?
How do you feel?
I think the stamp plans are a big thing. That way, we know that everything that's in front of us is actual.
Well, we could condition that. And, and Mr. Hill is a...
He's the one who stamped it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I had stamped it. I can't believe I brought you up with...
This one, I have a stamp on this one.
Yeah, I thought I had stamped it.
10-3-19. Is it the 10-3-19?
The plan I emailed might not have had a stamp because it came off our server.
But in any event, right, you...
I'll be opening this and stamp it.
There's a stamp right here, yeah.
That's the only thing that would hang me up.
Okay. Nick?
I'm good. I'm good with conditioning and petition approval based on those things.
Okay.
I'm good to do it with the condition that you stamped the plan and do whatever.
Sure, Steve? On number four, are we going to condition to align the travel lane?
No, I don't, I...
They could for a minute, just paint. It's not going to hurt anything.
Yeah.
You could put the paint out there to align it. I'll change the plan to show that that to be striped right, right in line with that aisle.
Yeah, so you'd show four striped spaces...
Yep, right in line with that aisle.
Right in line with the, with the aisle.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, any comment from, no, okay. All right. So, entertain a motion with the conditions as, and he's been jotting down, or, yeah, okay.
Want to go through the conditions?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve based on stamped drawings that...
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation are from 9:30 to 3:30. That the four spaces, I believe, are aligned with the travel line. The handicap spaces meet the requirements for slope and do not exceed the 2 percent grade. And then, number seven was that the parking needs to be brought up to the standards of the bylaws for 18 and a half inch, or 18 and a half foot.
By nine.
By nine.
By nine.
All right.
I'll second that as stated.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Good job, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Appreciate it. Pardon?
Welcome.
Motion to close?
No, make a motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rachel, keeping us on our toes, yeah.
No, close my way later.
You know, the thing we didn't address is the waiver request for photography site plan, so we should vote on that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just going to do a vote on the, kind of a motion to accept the waiver request. Yeah, the photograph, the site plan, the permission, although he did all of that, so...
Yeah, he did it.
Yeah, so...
That's good.
Yeah, just the landscaping and the photography. Motion?
Make a motion to waive the photography and landscape.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Have a good night. Okay, applicant, Massett Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located in 54 Faith Ave. That's continued to November 12. Correct? And motion to continue to November 12?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have minutes.
Well, Adam, we don't have to open that to make the motion.
No, because it's already been opened. We have meeting minutes from September 24th and October 8th.
Which one did I give you the correction time?
October 8.
All right, so motion for the September 24th and, and October 8th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, for September 24th?
Both.
There's no amendments on 24th.
What's that?
There were no amendments on September 24th, okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, so we should do a separate vote on the 10-8, yeah. So, the, it says amended for October 8th.
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
One quick update. Sure. The massed plans are posted online. It's 250 pages of main document plus 150 pages of appendix. Want to read it? I can print out hard copies for you if you'd like. Expect you to study it thoroughly. It'll be expected to be on the agenda for the next meeting for your consideration for adopted.
Okay. So, it's on the Auburn website?
It should be on the front page, it should be. And if you want a hard copy, I'm happy to provide. I can drop it out, come out next week.
Don't kill any more trees on the Internet online. Right, anybody want a hard copy? No?
If you want to simplify it all, it has 207 goals. That's the key of the direction of the town looking for.
That's it.
That's it.
Is there something that'd be like bullets? We just read it quick?
I want a top 10.
It's a spreadsheet.
10 is the point, maybe.
Do we want to tell Adam anything that we would like him to discuss on the bylaw, on the...
Yeah.
Third-party, I mean, on the tri-party agreements or what kind of an agreement we do and how it's, you know, we, we want to get to something that's pretty simple and standard that we can do with everybody.
But has teeth.
The least liability to us and involves, which probably can't do it, no litigation. It's almost like it's, you give us the bond and it's up to us. If we want to take it, we take it.
I want no more letters of credit, just go with the bond. It's easier to grab. Agreed?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The least, all positive on our side.
Path of least resistance as far as the, you know, using the money and grabbing the bond and, and making necessary...
No encumbrance on the town and the least amount of litigation to get what we need. Even with the bond, you still have to go argue it. If there's some kind of a thing, because you know what? If they, my feeling is if the guy comes and professes everything that they're going to do, an applicant, and we're going to do this and we'll live up to that and we'll do this and that, then put up a bond, then that you are willing to let us take if we see fit, without you having an option to disagree. Get as close to that as you can.
We need to be able to have teeth in some of these things, and I think that's really been lacking. I've kind of felt frustrated.
With the bond, you do have some teeth, but the bonding company has the ability to hire the original contractor to finish the work as proposed.
Done.
But it also have the ability to say, you're done, and they bring somebody else in, and that's what the bond pays for.
But I think, you know, a couple of things, you know, requiring grading plans for every single one of the lots, make sure that they're graded appropriately, and, you know, can you think of anything else that we could be, you know, we could be working on to, you know, to tighten these up?
Well, like I said, tonight with up on Hampton Street, we need to see the whole 13 lots within their own border graded so that there's no water going from one house to the other, and then that of that whole subdivision or any part of it not going on or being directed to anyone else's property that's not in it.
The Hampton Street side, I guess, they're going to grade those, so they're going to run into their, their new side street. I don't know what they're going to do with the Down Street side.
Because I came up Eaton Ave and the, the last house on the left that's, you look and it's like they got a little side yard on the up, going up the upside, and then there's that piece of ledge that comes over and goes right down. That water will be coming right down and over and right into the thing. Before, it was all trees. He had it a little bit flattened out. They had all kinds of wood that deflected all of that, but that's all gone.
Yeah, yeah, and that's going to create, you know...
He intends not to put the stone wall back to the right.
Has the potential to create, you know, issues for, for the other developers.
Yeah, they have to run the drainage, even behind the houses, would catch bases to drain them out to Eaton Ave, but I don't think, I don't know if there's any drainage on Eaton Ave till you get down to the state road.
Plus, don't we want to also discuss the, the line of credit and what are the options with a line of credit?
Well, you should come up with a couple of things and let us decide.
Yeah.
And maybe have Bob come back, like he said.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's an important thing because it's, it's just created an expense to the town and so many problems with almost, with a lot of developers.
Yeah. Automatically, I'll take one out for their roadwork. You have to take out a roadwork permit. You have to provide a bond for the roadwork. Now, the private property, that's something we need to work on, like you said, with the grading and...
Yeah, prior to the sale of these homes, you know, all of that has to be, you know...
We got a, what can we ask them what we can put? Well, can we create within ourselves here that they have to grade or that they, you said, have a, almost have a site superintendent present at all the time or somebody that we hire or something?
There...
That can watch what's going on there to make sure they, because what they do is they just do whatever they want.
They just apologize for it later. It's like, well, I mean, I don't know why we can't have somebody on our own side, I mean, especially if we're going to take out a bond and be monitoring it throughout.
There, there will be.
Okay.
We, this board approved...
Yes, we did.
New construction inspection fees in January. The subdivision would be, if it's approved, would be the first one that is...
And is that a town employee that's going to be doing that?
Oddly not. It would be somebody that's hired by the applicant.
It's going to be somebody like me that's retired. And that's what will happen.
Viable?
Are you pitching it?
Are you viable?
No.
Is he pitching for that job?
It would be somebody the town hires, the applicant pays, well, similar to a period fee.
Yeah.
Town hires them, but the period, the applicant pays.
That's a perfect job.
So, there's, we have it all lined out exactly what and when, without...
Did you say you've been retired for 47 years?
What's done or completed.
Well...
I thought I just shouldn't say that.
All right. But you, you understand the gist of what we're trying to get to here and what we'd like Mr. Menard again to...
They're just avoiding problems, big problems, when they're small problems.
Big problems, right.
You know, nip them in...
Nip them in the bud.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
I'll, I'll speak with Julie and Bob, and again, I'll try to reach out to some other towns, see what they do, if they do anything.
What they're doing, yeah.
Try to come up with a game plan.
Or if not, let's us be the first one that's the others look at. They'll look at it to us for an example.
Do that, too.
Let's be number one for a change.
I know we talked, floor about the query, like with the removal of all that stuff and the other development, and it was minor or considered minor. Is there, like, can we define what being taken off-site?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's situations...
That's another one.
That is really pathetic.
So, are we allowed to define that or is it... That would require rewriting the bylaw. Rewriting the bylaw. There would be a whole different, this board cannot do that. We could have input, but that'll have to go to town meeting. Okay.
Well, who would do it? The bylaw committee? We would feed what we wanted to the bylaw committee and they would present it to the town meeting?
And that has to be before...
You go through, I mean, you would go and I'd bring it, probably bring it to the yasque collaborative, I don't see why that couldn't be done, it's a public meeting. I'd bring in Bill Coyle and Caleb Moore, you would be, it would be a large effort to rewrite that particular bylaw. Just want to define it. That way, we don't have people coming back and saying that, yes, they removed more than what was discussed.
And which they certainly have.
It's just like, that's just like a gravel pit operation.
It is, it's a quarry operation.
It's nothing more than a gravel pit. And the guy said, he was making money and they were just trucking load after, in that one period, 31 minutes, nine trailer dumps, I watched go get loaded and out in 31 minutes.
Wow. It also works in reverse, how much stuff they can bring into the lot.
Yeah, but we, we don't want to, we want to control that.
Yeah.
He could have pinpointed that, but he could have just picked it out for that and then walked away from it all, you know?
Well, very cautious in the little meeting, so you don't want to get too far off, what could be considered unforeseen business.
Okay.
Bring it in, bring it all in.
All right. Bring it in.
They can put discussion of bonds and such on either, next meeting might not be the first meeting.
It's going to have to be.
December is a lot, there's four new items on the next meeting, so you don't want to bring that up the next meeting, but...
Okay.
Maybe December, we'll get something scheduled.
All right, sounds good. The motion to...
Adhere.
Adhere?
Make the motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.